In accordance with provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has given adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date, time, and place of this meeting in the Home News Tribune and has posted notice of this meeting at the Highland Park Middle School, 330 Wayne Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. Lynda, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Aversa?
Here.
Ms. Bull?
Here.
Mr. Dietz? Ms. Hughes? Ms. Poynter Titus? Mr. Ross?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez?
Here.
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Lynda, could I do red resolution number five separately and six separately, or can we run them all together?
You can do them all together.
Okay. Okay. We need a resolution for items five through eight.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
And should we do the student update? Okay. So, could we have the update from you?
So, in news that is to come, we have the music department concerts, namely the orchestra concert this Wednesday, and then the band concert this Thursday on the 10th, and the choir concert next week, right, on the 12th? Sorry, the 22nd, sorry. The girls softball score as of right now stands 310, and the boys baseball, which has been doing pretty well, is 9 to 4. And the track team, boys and girls individually, both haven't really had that many meets, but they've been doing pretty well. And just recently, last weekend, they had the freshman sophomore meets, and three people placed. And next weekend, or this weekend, rather, they're preparing for the individual GMCs. Boys tennis is 9 to 2. And, okay. As you might have noticed, DECA came back from Utah as in second place, and from the International Conference. And there's a new club in our school, an Amnesty International Club. We have some students who got into all-state choir, Riley Ernst as a tenor, Charlotte Feingold as a soprano, and Lucas Marin as a bass. The teen center held Denim Day on April 25th, and it was for sexual harassment and violence awareness, and that was successful. And, that's it.
Thank you. And we are excited to have the DECA team here tonight. Super, and I'll go talk about that.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us. So, tonight, we're very honored to present our distributive education, from our distributive education Clubs of America, aka DECA, our award-winning students. And we want you to know that, and I have asked them here tonight to not only talk about their experience and their victory, but also to talk about their history, because it's a short one. And four years ago, we didn't have a DECA club. And now, we're the best in the nation, and we finished second to Germany. So, I don't think that's too shabby for just being in existence for four years. And probably even equally as important, what I've come to know about the DECA, or learn about them, or experience with them over the course of the last week or so, has been the sense of community and the sense of family that exists within the group itself. And they're very fortunate, because their advisor, Ms. Harper, really has put her heart and soul into this club, and I think that's where the students probably have learned how to win, how to become a family, and how to give back to not only their community, but other charitable organizations. So what they're going to present tonight is their history, in terms of how they began, from their humble origins to who they are now, and the work that they've done along the way. So we are just so very, very proud of our DECA students, and we would also like to thank the HPEF. Through their very generous contribution, our DECA award winners were able to get out to Salt Lake City, Utah, and win the competition. So, we thank you, HPEF, and again, we're just so proud of our DECA students. So, without further ado, the presentation.
Hi, I'm Angie Harper, and four years ago, I was hired here in Highland Park as a para. And when you get the para job, you get the really good job of being cafeteria duty every day. So I was able to meet many students. My one, there was this one girl named Vicky Valenta. Day one, somehow she knew I had something to do with DECA, so she came to me, and I said, "Oh, when I was in high school in 1982, I was a DECA member." And I was telling her about presentation. I told her about my kids, and my son Kyle, who now is the technology teacher here, he was a four-time state winner for DECA. He won the National DECA Scholarship, four-year collegiate. So I would tell her all this, so she's like, "You gotta come and help us, you really gotta help us." So that was in October. By November, we started trying to get into regions, and they allowed us to get into regions, even though it was our first year. We had seven members. Today, we have 40. And as you can see, we're collecting pretty good with all the trophies, awards, and everything we've done. So, I had started with Mr. Weiner, and he is retired now, so now I have Tracy Wilson. She is the new co-advisor with me. She's now learning all the ropes with our DECA family. So, the 10 that I brought here with me today, they've all been to the ICDC, which is the International Conference for DECA. It's in Utah. There's 18,000 other DECA students there competing, Asia, I mean, we are all around the world. And we took second in the world, but, I just won't put that in. So, they are going to do the presentation. Yeme has done a PowerPoint, they're all going to speak, so they're kind of like a little nervous, but they're going to really show you some awesome stuff we did. Our main thing that we do is community service and public relation. We want to make a very strong bridge with the school and the community. And as of right now, I think we've done a great job. So I am very honored to turn it over to my DECA students, and Yeme, Fanchoi, is going to be the one to start it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Yeme Fanchoi, and I'm a senior in Highland Park High School, and this is my second year as a DECA member. And so, we're all really excited to be here to share our experiences with you guys, and I put together this little presentation that takes DECA through the years, then and now. And basically, we're especially highlighting this year's events, not only the competitive events, but also the community service. And so I'm going to actually turn it over to Steve, who's the president of DECA, and he's basically going to describe what DECA is about. So I'll start the presentation now.
All right, so as Dr. Wood mentioned, we have a really, really short history. We have a really short history, so a lot of people are probably still wondering what exactly DECA is, which is why I'm kind of up here to talk about. So, DECA has three main aspects, one of which is the school store. So we have the school store up and running every day after school, which is really popular among students and also staff. And the second aspect, as you can probably see from all these posters, is the community service aspect. You know, DECA puts a lot of time and energy into having a lot of community service projects throughout the year. And the final aspect is the competitions. There's the first regional, which is kind of like the county-wide tournament. The state level, which you can only make after you qualify through regionals. And finally, the one we just came back from, the international level, where, as previously mentioned, there's like countries from Asia, Europe, all over the world, who come, who came to Utah to participate. All right, so, one of the most impressive things about this club is the growth. You know, like when I was a freshman, three years ago, we only had like seven people in the entire club. You know, that's when the club just got started. We didn't really do anything other than run the school store and participate in regionals. You know, we didn't really even go to the state level that much. When I was a sophomore, the club sent four people to states, one of which, one of whom actually went upstage and got an award at states, so that was really impressive. And then, during my junior year, as you can see, the club completely expanded, like, throughout the entire school. And we actually sent 13 people to states, most of whom got an award. And then finally, this year, as you can see, we've expanded even more. So, one of the most impressive parts is that we actually got a 10% increase throughout the two years, which means that we actually got a gold membership-level award in the state competition for two years running. So that's pretty impressive.
And this is the school store, which Tabitha is just going to briefly mention again.
Oh, yes. So, the school store, like our president said before, is located on the second floor, and we sell mostly food, but we also have notebooks and things like that, because we do operate in a school. And it is pretty popular, and it's a really great tool, because it lets the DECA members really see what entrepreneurship and what business is, because we're actually operating a real store, and we're learning a lot about responsibility. So, yeah, the school store is a really good tool for all of us to learn more about business.
So, this is a timeline of the events that took place this year. And the first event that happened was actually the Breast Cancer Walk at the Woodbridge Mall, which was Sunday, October 16th. And Mary Ann will talk a little bit more about that.
So, ever since DECA started four years ago, DECA has been participating in the Breast Cancer Walk that takes place at Woodbridge. And, you know, so over the four years, you know, you raise money in order to walk. And over the four years, the Highland Park DECA chapter has been able to raise over $2,500, which is pretty impressive. And, you know, basically, this walk takes place every, around October, it's late October, mid-October, so it starts to get chilly around that time. So it's actually quite cold. I know we look kind of warm in the picture, but it was really cold that day. You know, it gets cold, but there are, you know, like 4,000 kids there, from like all DECA chapters all over the state, and then just, and anyone who wanted to come out and walk. So it's really, you know, it's something really great to watch, as, you know, you see like this huge mass of people come out and walk for such a great cause.
FC Square is also an event that we do every single year, and Reyna will talk a little bit about that.
Hello, my name is Reyna Lopez. FC Square, we have it for, since freshman year until now, so we started DECA. Basically, what FC Square is about is we raise money for kids who have cancer. We actually write a 10-page manual, which we talk about what we did, and we actually made ribbons. My junior year, we made ribbons for kids, for kids who had cancer, and we sold them around the school and businesses around Highland Park. We sold them for a dollar, and we raised an amount of money of $800. My senior year, we did the FC Square again, which is Harvest of Hope, which we raised $500, which we made pumpkins, that we posted in our DECA bulletin board.
The DECA bulletin board is in the center hallway of our school, and me and Reyna, for the past four years, have been in charge of decorating and maintaining the DECA board. Last year, we, our DECA board had, we were going to Florida for nationals, so our DECA board had palm trees and sun, and it showed like our road from Highland Park High School to the DECA chapter. And this year, since we went to Utah, we did snowboard, mountains, the salt lake, so this is to show what we're doing. And as we go, I don't know if you could see it on that board, but as we go, the different steps are shown with pictures and our successes.
So, regions took place on Tuesday, January 10th, 2011, and Bonning will talk a little bit about his first experience there.
Hi, I'm Bonning Zhao, and this is my first year joining DECA. Well, in the beginning, I didn't really know what DECA was about, and it was such a small group. But after I heard from Steve, who's a friend, he told me that DECA was really interesting. He also told me that there was a lot of field trips DECA was involved in. So I was like, "Oh, that's pretty cool, I'll join DECA." But like after, but after like going to like classes with Ms. Wilson after school, and learning what DECA is really about, I really got motivated to win, and it's really interesting. So basically, my first year, I was, I had to participate in PBM, which is Principles of Business and Management. And the test is basically 100-question test, and there's also a role play, where we pretend we have a job, we're applying for a job, and the teacher is like a manager. And we have 10 minutes to prepare, they give us a scenario, and we prepare for it. And then we go up there, talk, it's like an interview, and we try to get the job. And we had to cover certain categories, and the better we speak, it's like we're being graded on it, and it's like 50/50. And this year, I actually got third in role play, and third overall. So, that was my first year.
So this is, we took 30 people to regions, and basically, I think 19 of them placed in the top 10. And this is based, a list of the people who placed in the top 10 of regions. And so, everybody actually does a different event. The first years all have to do PBM, which is Principles of Business Management, but second years, third years, and fourth years, they can choose an event that they want to do, whether it's a team event or an individual event. So the preparation for states is actually, I think, one of the most important steps. A lot of people choose to do manuals, and Vicky Valenta will explain what a chapter manual is.
Every year, you get to choose between like 30, I think, or 40 different manuals you could choose from. And of June of last year, our DECA chapter decided that this year, we wanted to base all of our manuals off of community service and public relations. So, everybody in our chapter decided to do some form of either community service, or to inform the community about business. So, I guess me and Reyna are going to talk about our public relations project.
Our public relation project was about Make-A-Wish. We decided to make a walk outside in the track of Highland Park High School, which in this walk, we decided to ask the students and the community to come in and join us, which the walk only cost $5. That was the money that we were going to raise to send to the Make-A-Wish Foundation.
The walk was able to bring our entire school together, and if you could see on the board, I mean, on the PowerPoint, that a bunch of different faces are talking to each other, and everyone's having a great time. And this shows that through community service, for doing something for a good cause, our whole entire community can come together. And after our walk, and after we raised $1,700 for the Make-A-Wish Foundation, a business, a local business called Windows and Doors Outlet, and Ms. Aversa, Mr. Aversa, got to, we were honored, and they donated a life-size check to us to display in our hallway, which is right over here. And, yeah.
Actually, we knew that this project was successful, because we got half of the high school to participate. We had about 200 students participate the walk, which we only have about 400 students attend in Highland Park. Which for us, it made us very proud, because we knew that the school supported us, and there were, and we had a lot of the support from the teachers and our fellow members of Highland Park High School.
After the walk, we were honored to be invited to the Make-A-Wish Castle, which there is only two in the entire nation, right? And you have to, to get, go into the castle, you have to either be invited, or you have to be an ill child. And thanks to the community of Highland Park, we were able to attend the Make-A-Wish Castle.
Unfortunately, we cannot show you pictures of inside the castle, because that's to keep a secret for the kids who are ill, so they didn't want us to take pictures. But Vicky will share a little story about a room that we thought it was really special, and it brought the DECA chapter together.
There's a room in the castle, and I think the picture's going to be coming up soon, where you get a crystal, and before you enter the room, you get this box, and usually it's an ill child, but I got the opportunity to do this. And when you walk into the room with the crystal, the room starts to change, and it goes from a library to a night sky, and shooting stars go across the ceilings and walls. And I think at that moment, the DECA chapter realized what a great thing we have done, and what we were able to do. And it was just an amazing feeling that we all got, being able to see that we were successful, and with our successes, we got honored, and to be able to feel this kind of feeling.
But not only visiting the Make-A-Wish Castle, we actually granted a boy named Rafaelito from Middlesex County a wish. Thank you.
So, Oscar will...
Hi, I'm Oscar Lee. I'm a sophomore, and this is my second year in DECA. And this is my first year ever doing a chapter manual, so I did the financial literacy promotion project. And basically, my job was to promote financial literacy in the community, and enhance the existing knowledge of financial literacy. Oh, okay. Okay, so should I, okay. So, the first thing we did before starting any activities was conduct research on Highland Park's relationship with financial literacy. So from the research we conducted, we found out two main data points. One, that financial ill literacy was present throughout all age groups, young, old, and middle, and that people didn't, people weren't really enthused about financial literacy for some reason. Financial literacy really, really wasn't seen as very interesting. As you can see from the cloud, the word cloud I had up there, people described financial literacy as boring, who cares, whatever. And so, we really wanted to change that, and keep those two things in mind when designing the activities, to make them inclusive, to make sure that all age groups were affected by them, and to make them interesting. So I had a couple of activities to promote financial literacy. The first was the senior center classes. We had some classes to teach seniors about basic financial literacy topics, and also topics they might not have as much experience with, like online banking, internet fraud. We also had classes at the Bartle School, and we taught some kids with games, sorry, a combination of games and classes. And we also, I also had social media outreaches. We had accounts on Tumblr, Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, Form, Spring, and Gmail, and that was really to market to the really younger generation, who's really active on social media. I also had library book displays in the public library, the Highland Park High School library, the Highland Park Middle School library, and also the elementary school library. We also had speakers come in, six in total, one of them from the New Jersey Department of Banking and Insurance. He really liked, I presented my project and everything we did to him, and his team really liked what we did. And they really liked the font, and especially, Anchor Jack, if you were wondering, it's pretty cool. And so we had a retro theme, which also was inclusive, because the older generation thought it was nostalgic, oh, it's working now. So, and then the younger generation thought it was pretty cool, since everyone's wearing Ray-Bans, it's really nostalgic, retro. So they really liked our font, and they wanted to incorporate our campaign in their nationals, I mean, their state campaign, their state financial literacy campaign. We also had articles to promote our activities. I had a movie, two movie showings at the Highland Park Public Library, The Ascent of Money, it won an international Emmy for Best Documentary. We also had a contest in the middle school, there were posters hanging throughout, and they really marketed financial literacy to the middle schoolers. And I also had a giveaway. I had financial literacy materials distributed through the FDIC's Money Smart Program. I have some leftover booklets I have that I didn't distribute yet, and some CDs throughout the tables. And I also partnered with Kinetics, a local fitness center, to produce these pencils, which I will soon distribute. And as a result of all my activities, I gained a lot of support from public officials, namely U.S. Senator Frank Lautenberg, the Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders, CNBC, the New Jersey Department of Banking and Insurance, and also the Highland Park Borough Council. Thank you.
Okay, so as Oscar passes out the pencils, Mary and Nina can, will go up to talk about their own entrepreneurship manual.
Okay, so, let's bring that down. My name's Mary.
My name's Nina.
Okay. And we did the entrepreneurship promotion project, which was, we just basically tried to promote what entrepreneurship was. And we basically kind of did two activities in depth, and it was workshops at the library, and then we had a speaker come in, who's actually a Highland Park alumni. He opened his own, is in the process of opening his own art studio, right on Main Street, and so we had him come in and talk. And, so Nina, could you elaborate?
Okay, so I'm going to talk about Jonathan Horowitz, who is the artist that came in and showed us entrepreneurship. So, I'm going to tell a little story. So Mary and I were walking one day with Tabitha, our DECA member. We were walking along Main Street, because we wanted to bring in a local entrepreneur to show the students that be, having this passion and having this dream was possible. So then, we asked several local entrepreneurs if they wanted to come in and speak to our students. And some of them rejected for personal reasons, but some just didn't really want to. So then, we were like sort of discouraged, and then we saw this brightly lit up mural. It was just painted last summer. It's on Veriton Avenue, if you like drive past, you can see it. So we saw this mural, and we were like, ooh, we were wondering who painted the mural. So then we saw this artist that was working in the art studio, and we walked in, and we asked him if he had painted the mural, and then he was like, yes. And then we asked him what he was working on, and we talked for over about half an hour. And then we found out, as Mary said, that he graduated from Highland Park High School. So we just asked him to come in and share his experience with us. We actually found out that he wasn't an art major, he was actually majoring in logistics.
Yeah, it was, it was really nice to do this project with our entire chapter, and it really, I guess, widened our scope of, you know, what entrepreneurship is, and that's basically an important part of DECA. So we really had fun doing this project.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, I thought we were going to go into this later, but when we competed at states, we took second, and so we were able to move on to the national level. And so that was also really fun.
So, Tabitha and I will go up and talk about her community service manual.
Yeah, hi, I'm Tabitha, and I'm also a junior, the second year in DECA. And what my, the group I worked with for my community service project was the Ronald McDonald House, and they focused on really the families of sick children, because they try to give, like provide support for them, housing and that kind of thing, because usually they have to travel to get the adequate care for their children. So I found that, I found out about what they do, and like how they do it, and I was really like interested. So, and one of the things that they, that convinced me to work with Ronald McDonald was that they do this thing called a pop tab collection, and pop tabs are the little things used to open cans, and I thought that'd be really cool to collect in school, because it'd show people that community service doesn't always have to be really complicated or difficult, and it can be something that you don't really always have to think about too much. And also, we, when I was thinking about planning this project, along with my chapter, we wanted to reach the whole Middlesex County, so we picked the New Brunswick House of Ronald McDonald, and we worked in the school in terms of promoting Ronald McDonald, and collecting books, and food, and that kind of thing. We also got the help of a corporate sponsor called Bentley Labs, and they provided things like cosmetics, like shampoos, and, but like things that would kind of help people stay more comfortable while they're in the house. So at the end, we had over 20 boxes of things, and we also collected some money. And it was just a lot of fun to get to know the DECA chapter in terms of community service. And I learned a lot about like planning a manual and everything, it was a really good experience.
So, the next manual actually wasn't this year's event, but it was... but it was a very popular manual last year. And Vicky and Raina are just going to talk about the Adopt a Soldier manual that they did last year.
Like Jemay said, we did this our junior year. Adopt a Soldier was where we collected items for the troops. We asked the whole school to give us, to bring in an item because we were trying to support the troops since it was between the holidays. We wanted them to have something special to eat or have that they, that they had when they were home. So we wanted to make them feel like they were back home. So we contacted a couple of soldiers that were in war and we asked them what were the things that they liked when they were home. And they gave us a list, which in that list, we gave it out to Highland Park High School. And most of the students and staff brought in items that we asked. And with that, we gave them, we actually took one of the windows from Highland Park of the hallways upstairs, which we gave them out a paper where it says, "Support our troops" and we wrote their names saying that they supported us. And Vicky will give you more.
We found out about this organization through Ms. Harper. And one of Ms. Harper's friends, I believe, son died in combat and she kind of informed us about what the Adopt a Soldier organization was about. And we really wanted to be a part of it. So we, we had our entire school help us to donate all these goods that they don't necessarily have while they're over there. And we maintained contact with these soldiers throughout and they thanked us continuously for everything that we did and everything that we donated to them. As well as that, last year, we took fourth place in the state. And what we forgot to mention earlier is our Make-A-Wish manual took third place in the state and we were able to compete at a national level. Also, along with that, we were published in the newspapers, I believe the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger for both manuals, giving Highland Park a positive look.
So actually, the two people who did this creative marketing manual to Mary and Sharon, they both couldn't be here tonight. So I'm just going to give a brief description of what they did. So the creative marketing event is a chapter project that develops in chapter members, a analytical and creative approach to the marketing process. And basically, they collaborated with All Colors, which is actually a company in Highland Park, I think. Right, Oscar? In Highland Park. And they are also Highland Park High School alumnis. And so they created spirit wear to sell in the high school. And not only did Sharon and Tamara collaborate with All Colors, four of our DECA members are interning there too.
So like, like you may mentioned, there are four of us interning, Mary, Nina, Oscar and I. And All Colors is located on 300 Veriton Avenue. And they basically are a merchandising company. So if you were like, for example, our sweatshirts for the sophomore class were printed there. We kind of gave them the design and they had it done. They also let us, when we interned there, we got to do some sales research and we use, we're learning how to use QuickBooks. And it's, it's really cool because we learned to how to act in a professional setting and just how to like answer phones correctly, send out professional emails, all those kinds of skills that we need to use in the future. And All Colors is also really cool because they're, even though they're a pretty big company, they're official vendors of Rutgers and of the Hudson Group, which is a popular store or vendor in airports. But they still try to stay local when they're trying to buy things like t-shirts and that kind of thing. So it reinforces that whole idea of staying local.
So States was February 28th to March 1st. And Ratish will give like a brief presentation about what States is.
So I'm Ratish, I'm a senior this year. And this year, our chapter was able to send 19 students to Cherry Hill, New Jersey to compete in States. Basically, we spent three days and two nights there, indulged in competitive events, depending on whatever event we chose to partake in. Now, the road to get to States, you could either place in Nationals or write a manual, which several of our students have done. But once you're in States, if you got to States by the route of participating in an event, you had to write a 100-question test, depending on what like event you are. Like, for example, mine was Retail Merchandising Series or RMS, where we had to write a hundred-question test and do two role plays. The other way to get to States was by doing a manual. And once you get to States, you would present your manual and, and get judged on it, so.
States is also where you can get scholarships, state-level scholarships, and we are proud to have one of our scholarship recipients here.
Also, like she said, we get scholarships, which I applied to one. It was the Central Region Scholarship, the DECA Scholarship, which I won. I was really happy because, uh... Thank you. I'm the second member who gets a scholarship before Jack, who is now a college member, won a scholarship. So it was really proud to get a scholarship too. Thank you.
So this is a list of accomplishments for States. And I think, I would really like to say that we only have 30 members and 19 members who went to States, while Northern Highlands and other schools have about like 400, 200, like in the hundreds. And for us to be able to bring that many people to Nationals, so nine out of the 19 made it to Nationals, I think that's really amazing. And actually, Mr. Harper told me jokingly to do automobile service marketing and I actually did it and I won third in States. With first place in role play and also second place in instructional exam. And a lot of our people made it into the top four and I'm really proud of that. Okay, so we just came back from Nationals and so we're just going to share some exciting things that happened there.
Well, the whole DECA chapter is coming up because for us, Nationals was very important and we did it as a group. So DECA is like our little family and we do everything together. So each of us will talk about experience that we had.
One of the things that really stands out as to how close of a family we have become was that four of us, me, Raina, Mary and Nina, were not able to, we actually previously looked up research stuff about Salt Lake City. And one of the main things that we all wanted to attend was the Boondocks, which had go-karts, laser tags, batting cages. So we were all really excited to attend that trip. And the four of us were not able to go because we all had callbacks. So as a group, I guess Ms. Harper gave us the choice. She said that Mr. Harper will take half of us there and the rest will meet them there later. And our DECA members said that they don't want to go unless we can all go together. So it was kind of sweet that they didn't leave without us.
So actually, I would like to play a video that basically wraps up, sums up what Nationals was. And it's like, there were 18,000 people there, so we filled up a whole hockey arena. And this is a video. Oh. There's some speakers. Yeah. So, um, I think Steve and Ratish should talk a little bit about what VBC is.
So as you may know or may not, Steve, me and Ratish and Jemay, we competed in the international competition for Virtual Business Challenge Retail and we got second place in the world. But behind that fancy plaque we got, there was a lot of practice and experiences that came before it. One that I would like to highlight in particular was that nothing would have like even happened if Ms. Harper, actually a few years back, didn't go to Anaheim, California, participate in a raffle and win the license for the virtual business retailing, like the software. So, so after Ms. Harper got the license, Mr. Wiener, who is our ex-advisor, he kind of helped set it up for us so we could actually compete in it. So then, after that, so I started competing in the Virtual Business Challenge in my sophomore year with Jack, who is now in college. And so in my sophomore year, we got to, we got to Nationals, but we only came in sixth, which was definitely good, but obviously, we want to, you know, aspire higher. In junior year, we came in seventh. And now, as you know, senior year, we came in second. So that was really amazing. So I want to talk a little bit about the, the kind of competition itself because we're kind of throwing these words all at you, but a lot of you don't know what we're actually doing. So Virtual Business Challenge Retail is, you could think of it as a computer game. Basically, what happens is all the participants kind of open a store inside a shared instance with all the other competitors. And basically, the goal is to make the most profit. There are a list of items that you can put in the store, but obviously, we control pretty much everything else, like staffing, marketing, like our pricing and also how much we purchase of each product. Even, and we can even choose to not purchase a product at all. So obviously, there's a lot of kind of like strategy and also trial and error involved in this. To qualify for Nationals, actually, we have to come, we came in top two, came in second in the Northeast. So teams have to come in top two of their respective region to go to Nationals, which results in a 16-team sort of bracket for Nationals. Do you want to talk about?
So basically, in the Nationals, it's like a double elimination. So if you lose two games, then you're automatically eliminated, obviously. But for us, what we did, we were fortunate enough and skilled enough to have won all of our matches. And in the, in the Nationals itself, victory is considered if you come in the top, there's four teams, right? So victory is if you're in the top two. So, and if you're in the bottom, third and fourth of that respective match, you either are sent down to the loser's bracket or if you've already lost and you're eliminated. So basically, we were able to stay in the top two. Well, we were actually first all the way until the final, except unfortunately, the final, we came second. But that's still good, you know, so, yeah.
So we competed against 500 other schools in, to qualify for Nationals. And so that means the 16 best teams in the nation, actually not even in the nation, internationally, got to compete. So this was my first year doing it and I was like so nervous in the first game because I really didn't want to fall into the loser's bracket because then you have to play two extra games. And so actually, Ms. Harper looked at me and she was like, "Stop shaking." Because my legs were like shaking, my hands were shaking. Because for the competition, you have to be able to put your store in a good location before other people play it there. And I've seen teams run each other into debt because they were so close to each other. I really didn't want that to happen to us. So this was us receiving our award. This was, this picture, actually, I can't point to it. That picture was us on the stage. The whole New Jersey was cheering us on because we were one of the only three teams to be able to make it into the top three for New Jersey. So for everything, so basically, New Jersey was cheering for us and Vicky was cheering the loudest. Like the girls in front of her, like seriously, just looked at her and was like, "Why are..." We actually sat in the Kansas row, so they were looking at us like, "Why are you cheering for New Jersey?" Yeah. And this is something that Oscar did. And he did not compete in an event, but he went to chapter management, which is a course.
So that's a picture of the Leadership Anaconda, one of the many activities we engaged in in the Chapter Management Academy. So the Chapter Management Academy was basically this entire room, I believe about 500 kids, chapter leaders from throughout the world, from like South Korea to New York to Ontario. So it was pretty cool. We met a lot of kids from throughout the world and we exchanged ideas, tips, strategies among the chapter leaders. And this was the Leadership Anaconda. We, we actually, all 500 kids, we had to line up in order of height. So the kid in the front was like four feet and then the kid in the back was like seven feet. It was very frightening. And we all had to anacondize ourselves and put our hands on each other's shoulders. And we basically, the girl in the front, she walked and when she took a left turn, everyone else had to take a left turn. And like she led us in a circle. And then the speaker, he just took a panoramic picture. And basically, what that activity really focused on was the effect one person has on everyone else, the ripple effect. And how, let's say, I just walked offstage right now, I wouldn't just be affecting myself, but the entire presentation. So we learned skills like that. Thank you.
And Bonning, who also did not compete in an event, went to the Leadership Academy and he will talk about this now.
So at Nationals, I was part of the LDA, with the Leadership Development Academy. It's basically an academy where I develop leadership skills so I can bring back to the chapter and make the chapter better. And basically, anyone can tell you how to become a leader, how to become a team player and how to like enforce what you have to say and work as a group. But at the LDA, like they immerse you in that situation where you have to like take a leadership. So when I first walked in, it was like a huge auditorium of 500 kids from all over the world and I was the only person from Highland Park there. So I was pretty nervous. And first, we, so we had to pick a table by ourselves to sit at of complete strangers. So once we did that, we then assigned teams, I was part of the green team. And it was cool how we each had our own chant, there were six teams of different colors and we each had our own chant. And we like participated in the activity. Like in the previous video, you saw that people were holding people, like groups were holding people up with strings. And that was one of the activities we did about how a team can affect one person, how we can come together and learn how to achieve, like carrying someone with a string. So that was pretty interesting. And the way we did it was, it's like when we walked in, every, some people, if you talk to them about leadership, they're probably... you talk to them about leadership, they'll probably be really bored. But the way we did it, like, we had, but our team was green, and we had team chants. So when we walked out into the hallways, and we had rotations, everyone started screaming, we had our own team chant, everyone waved their flag, it was amazing.
So, this is basically, besides competing, we actually had a lot of, um, downtime. So I think we would all like to share our experiences in Utah. Would anyone like to go first?
Um, first off, I would like to share a story, which we do in office sessions, which every state gets together, and we go, and they give us a presentation, but before the presentation, we trade pins. Every state gets 10 pins, which you traded with people you don't know from different states. You ask them if they want a New Jersey pin. As you can see in the table, uh, I have some pins that are lighting up. Those are pins that we trade with other states. And actually, that's pretty cool, because they teach us how to communicate with people that we don't know, and we're actually communicating with them, asking them if you want to trade friendly, and it's amazing, because you don't expect people to be friendly, but there, it's, it's just different. You have people who are friendly, they say okay, and we trade different stuff. And it's pretty cool. I guess we all have fun.
The pins are definitely something unique, because we meet people from all over the place, like, Canada, I believe, South Korea, um, Puerto Rico, Alaska, and you have to actually talk to them and kind of convince them to give you your pin for the New Jersey one, which apparently, New Jersey kind of got all their pins out before anybody had, anybody else had the chance, so it was kind of tough negotiating with them. And another place we got to visit while we were in Utah was, I think it's the Mormons' temple. And we learned a lot there. We learned about the Mormons and the history of Salt Lake City, and it was kind of interesting to know that the Mormons aren't just what you see on TV, and they're not all about polygamy. So, um, it was very interesting, and it was a great experience for all of us.
So instead of going to the Boondocks, um, we also went bowling, and I did the best. I got 140.
Actually wrong, it was my first time bowling, because I never went before, and actually, I was winning the first time, but then I kind of lost.
And I won.
Yeah.
Um, I was, you know, we were, this was a competition, so many of the times, we were like scattered all around the place, because we had competitions at different times. But, you know, as previously mentioned, you know, we had so much time to bond as a DECA family. Um, and what was really amazing was, you know, when we initially heard we were going to Salt Lake City, Utah, we were kind of like, "Oh, what's in Utah?" Because they had just gone to Orlando, where it's like Florida, but now it's like Utah. So we thought, you know, we had to struggle to find, you know, things to do to occupy ourselves. But actually, you know, because like we bonded so much, um, we were able to have fun in, like, the simplest things. We were at, um, a mall that was open, so there was like, it was just an outside mall, and they had fountains. And we, we basically spent an entire afternoon of a couple hours, just, just amusing ourselves, running through the fountains, getting each other wet, and you know, it was just, that was all we did for a couple hours, but you know, that was enough for us. So it was, it was really nice, like, that we like didn't get to go to the Boondocks. Um, just sticking together and really just having fun and just, you know, I don't know, spending that time together was, you know, really just a great experience.
Mary, how big was the mall?
Oh my goodness, you guys shouldn't get me started on this mall, because I must have visited that mall like every day we were there. There was actually two malls. I couldn't shop the entire thing, but, oh, I got so excited. The, the stores were so much larger than New Jersey, because there's so much more space out there, but the malls are really nice. Um, I encourage everyone to go to Salt Lake, it's really nice there.
Okay, so I also convinced Nina and Mary to accompany me to the Utah Museum of Contemporary Art. They didn't really want to go, because it was a museum, but it was really cool. The Sundance Institute was showing some special, um, new frontier films there, so it was really fascinating. We saw one on, um, black males and how their perception of the world is different from others. We saw, um, really radical experimental films. It was very awesome, and we were like the only people there, which made it even more awesome.
All right, so one other very important thing we did was, we actually went hide-and-go-seek while at the hotel. Um, yeah, the other advisors and other people living there weren't too happy about it, but, you know, we had fun. So basically, what happened was, the hotel was kind of like, how many floors? Nine? Nine floors. And there, it was open in the center, kind, there's like a circle in the center, so people on the ninth floor can actually like see all the way down. So what we did was, since we had nine, like, students, we split into teams of three. So three teams of three, and there was like one tracking team, which was like a team of three who counted in a room to like 60 seconds, and the other six people could go like pretty much anywhere in the hotel. Obviously, we had to limit ourselves from the lobby, because people were getting really angry. But like, other than that, we were just kind of like running around through the hotel. And then, so Nina, uh, would you like to talk about your experience?
I really will. Hi, so when my team was getting chased, and Steve and Ratish, they cornered me and onto one side, and I accidentally ran into a stranger's room. I didn't know what was going, because I, I didn't want them to catch me or anything, so I ran into that room, and then they just looked at me like I was cuckoo and nuts, and then I quickly ran out, and that was the end of that.
Okay, so then to end it, every night, we had dinner together, discussed our accomplishments. And then the last thing on our presentation is the award ceremony when we left out, when we got back here, being famous. We were like very famous through the airport, everyone was screaming and, uh, hanging off banisters for New Jersey, so we brought home the trophy, and you could see here, and then...
Wait, what about us coming together?
And then we would like to thank the Highland Park Education Foundation. I had wrote a grant with the help of Ms. Penzinger and Mr. Sclafani, and we were awarded the Highland Park Education Foundation Grant. And we thank you very much for helping our DECA chapter for next year to continue. As you can see, we have many awards, and next year, we plan to bring many more back. I thank all the parents for coming, Dr. Wood, Dr. Lu, or Mr. Ms. Lewis, everyone for coming here. So, from our chapter, we thank you very...
Uh, Ms. Harper? Uh, I actually wanted to, we actually wanted to say thank you to Dr. Wood, because with her, she had her support, and she came to actually a lot of our projects, the Make-A-Wish Walk, she actually was there to support us. Thank you, Dr. Wood.
I don't know what else to say to that, except wow. I think what's equally as important awards is the amount of charitable work that the group does, and the whole sense of family and community. You're definitely, both you and your advisor are, are people that we can certainly, Highland Park is certainly very proud of, and we thank you very much.
And we're glad you had fun out there, too, because, you know, it's difficult, Utah, Florida, Utah, you know, while the rest of us are back here in New Jersey, but...
Go home and, in the middle of this presentation, preparing for it, a lot of them were taking AP exams, too, so they were balancing a lot of different things. So we know you want to get home and get out of your blazers and everything else, but thanks again, and we're very, very proud.
The superintendent is going to go ahead with her report. Everybody ready?
Yes.
Okay, so who could top what they just did? So this is extremely brief, I just, I know, I won't even try, but, um, I know, there's no one here, thanks. But, uh, the academic, the academic report, well, they just saw everything. What we're trying to do is highlight how we're supporting and encouraging our administrators to take on really an increased instructional leadership role. So what I'd like to share with the board are snippets of different things that, um, the principals talked to us about in terms of how they're going about, uh, doing that. So at the Bartle School, Ms. Frazier, um, noticed when she was doing observations that the second grade teachers had begun using a new, uh, writing organizer called Foursquare. And it has added a lot of value to students in terms of being able to organize their thoughts and then transfer the information more easily into, uh, clear cohesive written form and paragraph writing. So what she did was, she had the second grade team meet with the third grade teachers at one of the recent faculty meetings to share the organizer, so that the third grade teachers are now experimenting with how that, uh, they can use it in their classes, which is what we've been trying to do in terms of getting the, the teachers to meet and to talk and to share more ideas, uh, within grade levels and then across the grades and across the schools. And a lot of times, we're, well, what we're trying to do is get the, uh, principals to spearhead that. So, um, at the Bartle School, that's just one small example of how that's being done. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Are you doing a HIB?
Hippo thingy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Okay, year-to-date, the high school has had seven HIBs, harassment or intimidation and bullying. The middle school, to date, has had 16, the Bartle School, one, and the Irving School, zero. Thank you. We don't want to share anything. Stays on that side, it goes on on that side of the table, stays on that side of the table. The curriculum committee... You're welcome, thanks. The curriculum committee met tonight and discussed a number of things. Um, on May 7th, um, there was History Day, uh, at the Bartle School, and... Middle, middle school. Middle school. And we did, uh, we did very well. Eight students are representing Highland Park in Washington in June. Um, on Wednesday, they're going to William Patterson. Mr. Hogan is the advisor. Um, also, the Honorable Travis Francis will be, um, visiting the high school for Law Day, uh, he'll be coming to the high school. We will be applying for a garden award from Whole Food in order to, uh, beef up our gardens, so to speak. Cows now? This is great. Uh, moving, moving on. There will be a Sustainable Schools Workshop in New Brunswick. Um, we had some teachers who were, who expressed some interest in attending. It'll be on June 25th through June 28th. Um, we actually, um, we need a board member also to, I think I can go one day, but if anybody else can go any of the other days, that might, that might work out. Sustainable Schools Workshop.
I'll volunteer to go the second day if you can.
It's actually four days, um, but I think, you know, the more, the more days we can...
Just tell me the information, I'll go.
So our before and after-school programs, um, our enrollment is, uh, up slightly this year, and we're not going to be raising the rates, um, for attendance. Um, we have two children, um, one in middle school and one in elementary school, um, being tested for gifted services, um, you know, as, um, as per our policies on, on these issues. And we are also going to be, uh, at least one of those children is being, uh, the testing is being contracted out at, at some expense, so, um, we're going to look into, uh, what it would cost to do the testing in-house, um, see if that would save us some money. Um, you are all emailed the Professional Development Plan, and Karen has hard copies, if you would like them. Um, she needs to submit it on May 16th, so if you could take a look at the plan, and if you have any comments, just to get back to her with them. Curriculum writing is well underway. Uh, this week, uh, Phys Ed and Health begins, um, and we're still sort of trying to schedule the visual and performing arts curriculum, but making good progress. And so over the summer, um, we'll be able to develop lessons, um, around the curriculum that's been developed. And, so, with that, I would like to move items two through four. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Linda, could we have the roll call? Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Adam, is there a finance committee report?
There is. Um, finance committee met today with myself, and we discussed, oh, 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 right, and Linda was there, too. But, uh, we discussed a lot of, uh, upcoming items and, uh, things that are going to be moved, moved today. Uh, first, we discussed the, um, an item that is on here, number seven, that I want to talk to the board about, that I have some concerns about, on the, uh, replacement of the visitors' bleachers. Uh, right now, um, we've evaluated them, and the visitors' bleachers are only used for football. Uh, they are on the opposite side of the main bleachers, and we've determined that they are, uh, not safe to use at all anymore. And we, there is a bid to replace them if the board deems that that's necessary. So let me finish my report, and then we can talk about, we can talk about that. Um, there is a addendum for the approval of the new contracted bleachers, which we budgeted for last year, and the money is set, set aside in capital reserve right now. Uh, this is one of, this, the, we had, that's the, uh, approval of the bid that did come back at the lowest amount, and we have reviewed with our architect and, um, deem that this is a appropriate bid and within the market value, so we are, then I recommend that we approve it tonight. Um, we will, the, the new bleachers will reduce the, um, size, or the seating capacity by a, a little bit less than a third. So, just wanted everybody to know that, um, which, you know, I think, we think is more than fine for the amount of people that we have come to even our most, you know, well, well televised game. Um, then there's a bunch of punchless items, uh, some that is on the, uh, your agenda for approval tonight, uh, including, uh, replacement of carpet, wood furnishing, all normal things that we have done every year around this time. Um, we have completed the, uh, the lockers in the high school. We have finished the third stage of that, and that, I can report, has been completed, um, which we have been on a three-year plan or two-year plan, I believe.
Third year.
Third, yeah, we've completed the third year of that. We also are moving, um, which the board had made a goal, um, a new telephone system. Uh, we have had, we got a bunch, um, a few competitive, um, competitive bids, and we have, uh, decided on X-Tel, um, I believe is, yeah, X-Tel. Um, and there is a, uh, there will be savings shown, um, in the phone, and we are going to be increasing our internet speed from six megabytes a second to 50 megabytes a second, um, in the, in the, in this district.
Approved at the last meeting.
And that was approved at the last meeting. And that, I believe, are all of my items to report, to report. We are in...
Oh, wait, you have one.
Oh, yeah, I have a correction. Yes, item six, I just would like to change the dollar amount to 1,265 and 87 cents. Um, that's, that money is just a reimbursement from the state, uh, for some of our HIB costs related to that. The board, um, the board is entitled to. Um, I just want to draw the curriculum committee's attention to item 21, we are approving... We are approving the Teachscape, that is on the agenda. And that is all that I have. With that, I would like to move items two through 22, I believe?
Three.
Two?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, twenty-three. What was that?
Twenty-one and 22 and 23 on the addendum.
Yep. That is my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, actually, I, yeah, I'm going to move seven. All right. I wanted to talk to the board about number seven, which I had some concerns about. This is replacement bleachers that is only used for football. I don't necessarily know if they are necessary, a necessary expense to be spending right now. I have concerns about the capacity, the necessary capacity, or I think we have the capacity to have home games, and at the least, I think we should wait a year to get rid of, to put the bleachers that are not being used right now, put them aside, and to judge the capacity of the bleachers to see if it is necessary to spend this dollar amount on new bleachers. You know, I know we are a small community. We have a nice-sized bleacher capacity already, and I can't remember them being filled to capacity where we need to overflow on another side. I know we like to have home and away, but I believe that our community is commendable enough and can respect people enough to have two teams sitting on one bleachers, which I know happens at many other districts throughout the state. So I would personally like to table seven, at least for the year, to see what it's, to see what it's like. I would like to hear what other board members think of that.
Well, this is just acceptance of quotes. It's not, it's not...
Eight's the one.
Yeah.
Oh.
So, sorry. Number eight is acceptance, yeah.
But if you table it to think about what to move, to do moving forward, then that means there's going to be no bleachers at all for the next, until, because these bleachers have to go?
No visitor.
One way, the visitors' bleachers, they have to go one way or the other?
Yes, those bleachers are deemed unsafe, and it will be an experiment also to see if we actually need that extra seating capacity.
Wouldn't you think if the, if the new bleachers we're getting for the home side is already going to be cut by a third, that we're going to need that? And I disagree with the away people sitting on the home side, sorry.
Okay, no, no, no. I knew there would be a conversation here, yeah. I personally believe we have the capacity to meet the needs. I just, you know, I know you're involved in it, so I am interested in your, I am interested in your, in your perspective of, of what you see at a football game and how filled the bleachers...
Well, unfortunately, they're not as filled as, as they should be, but I think it's still a separate issue from having a home and an away. I've never been to a game where you have the home and away on the same side, actually.
Lots of basketball games are played that way.
Doesn't it touch, I was at the, the States game last year.
Yeah. And a lot of basketball games, you have to sit on the same side.
You know, I know what we did, we did do for basketball when I was here, and you separated, you know, there were four bleachers. You left, you know, one of the four designated for the away team, and you let them, let them have their side and have their piece. I just think this is a large expense that we can maybe get away without spending.
How many bodies will be able to fit in the new bleachers?
A third less, right.
It's one-third less than it is now.
What is it now?
I'm thinking it's 1,200 now, and it would be 900, does that sound right?
Yeah, I think you're...
Something like that. I'm pulling numbers out of a distant memory, but it's my recollection, something like that.
The bleachers aren't just used for, for football. I've seen them used for soccer, and there was a national soccer women's game that was played there two years ago or three years ago, and that, it was full. So, I mean, if we're going to rent it out to other, not just, you know, Highland Park or local, you know, constituents, it would be a bonus to have more seating.
Right, but it would take us a long time to rent enough to make up for $30,000 worth of bleachers.
On top of 500 that we're already spending on new bleachers. From personal experience, the most I've ever seen it was besides the 9/11, the 9/11 event that we had here right after 9/11, the Rutgers band games. And I still remember seeing seats available on the bleachers.
But that's only had 1,200 capacity, not 900 or 800.
Right.
And just another thing, even just, I'm even thinking like the future, because it seems a lot of times, you know, you know, we make a decision right, right now, maybe, you know, there hasn't been as much attendance at things like in the past years, but what about moving forward? What about when there is? Then all of a sudden, we're going to say, five years from now, two years from now, 10 years from now, oh geez, we really need more bleachers, and I, I don't know. Sometimes it seems...
Well, since they're portable, we could actually just, I mean, they don't require real installation, they're portable bleachers, so five years from now...
Right, but it's still something that you have to purchase, and then the price is going to go up. Would be even more.
How long do they last for?
I don't know how long we've had these, but I would say very, very, very long time. No, that's why they're in such bad shape. I mean, they're probably at least 20 years old. I'd have to guess, you know, just based on like looking at the model and stuff, but they've been around a very long time.
So my suggestion, you know, would be, you know, because I understand what you're saying, if we do need them in the future...
Yeah, I'm just, I'm thinking of other things, too. You know, the middle school gym, that wasn't big enough, then we had to make that bigger few years, and you know, we've been with the bathrooms now.
If it is a real problem, I don't want it to go by the wayside in, you know, five years. So my suggestion would be to take them away for this year and evaluate how our seating capacity is for this year.
Monitor.
And, and if we are in need of seats, and if it is, seating is a problem, then you'll have my support next year to, you know, to buy, to purchase them for next year. I just can't, I just feel a little wary of spending the $30,000 right now on them. That's mine. Two cents.
Franny, you have a perspective on this?
I do, I do. I think we're finishing the athletic complex, I think we're finishing the bathroom, I think we're finishing those bleachers, I think we should finish them, and we have the money. I mean, I respect what you're saying, but my, my perspective is, let's finish it all, let's get it done, and let's have the facility look the way it was intended to look.
Okay.
It's going to be used for more than just high school football. I mean, that's the intent.
And as far as the attendance...
Be able to rent it out.
Right, I've been monitoring it, and you know, what we went out for will be, will be more than ample seating for people. And I just think that, you know, the complex is getting older, because now we went out, I mean, it's finished a couple of years ago, but we need to, we need to finish it and have it look the way it should look.
But we also have no money in the, in the fund.
Yes, we do.
How much, how much do we have in the fund to replace the field?
But that's not the point. The point is that...
It's not part of the capital...
Yeah, this is separate, and we, we have the money, right, but we have the money to do this. And my opinion is that we should do it and have it look the way it was intended to look. Because going forward, you know, who knows if we're going to have the money to do it, but we do have it now.
But when you say we have the money, that's...
We do.
We have the money to do that, and that will negate other things that this board might want to do with extra money that is available.
No, it's, this is money that we have set aside in capital reserve to do this, these types of projects. Yeah. And you can pick anything else, and we'll be able to, when we do our goals and we set them, we'll be able to allocate the proper monies as we have done for the last several years, yeah. No, I feel confident in doing that.
I know that, but there are...
I would like to complete the project.
No, I agree with that. I just, there are things that are coming to the board's attention...
It's like willy-nilly.
...in the next, in the next, you know, few months, maybe, that might need some money from this board, that this money can...
But this was a, yeah, so I mean, that's just my recommendation, but...
Is there any other discussion?
Now, have you actually made a motion to table this, or...
No, I will, I'm not going to be supporting the number eight. That's, I, I, I just, I don't want to table it right now, really. I want to put it up or down. I have no more comments.
Okay, we have a roll call, please. Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes to all, no to eight, please.
Sherry, could we have the personnel committee report?
Yes. Okay, yes, personnel, we did meet tonight, and we discussed a few things. We discussed maternity leaves, the math and science, the supervisor job description, and the new hire for the chemistry teacher in the high school. And I would also like to make a note to a change on number five. The salary, I can say your name right, Linda?
Yeah.
For Madeline Macaron should actually be 45, 660, not 39, 995. Okay, so then with that, I would like to move items two through 19.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please? Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Just absent.
Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Trish, could we have the policy committee report?
Policy committee did not meet, so I'd like to move items two through four.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Nobody went to the doctor?
No, apparently not.
This week.
Very feisty over there.
Are we taking a roll call?
Yes.
Or we do, are we... Did I already say, is there any discussion? Nobody said anything, right?
No.
Okay. Yes, roll call. Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Shall I wait?
No.
As he walks to the table? As he walks in? Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Do you want to know what you're yesing, Mr. Ross? It's the policy.
Policies.
Nine, okay. Was that a yes, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay, there is no president's report tonight. Is there any old business? Yeah, other than the liquor license. The, so we asked Sherry Adams, our attorney, about obtaining a temporary liquor license for the Ed Foundation, potential Ed Foundation fundraiser in, to be held in the high school cafeteria. And we also asked our insurance company, and they said... Linda, do you want to explain this?
Well, I just, when I go back to them, I want to... You want me to tell them what Sherry said first?
Yeah.
Okay. Sherry said that regardless, the insurance company, which Linda's going to share with you, said, you know, that we, our insurance policy doesn't cover it, we would have to get a different insurance, we would have to get an additional policy. Sherry basically said we would have to get the HPEF to indemnify us, blah, 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 blah. Bottom line, though, is that it would not be in the board's best interest to do that, because even if you're indemnified, you know, there's the, yeah, right, liability is still there, you can still be sued, so she could never recommend that this be something that the board do. And typically, schools stay away from this because of just the potential for liability, plus the whole idea of serving alcohol on school premises when we're trying to model for students, especially high school students, about drinking and driving and...
It's fine, I just, I wanted to, you know, I wanted there to be a very clear, you know...
I love the HPEF.
We all love the HPEF.
It just couldn't, it just wouldn't be appropriate in many ways for us to say, yeah, we can do this.
Well, I will take this information back to them. I think they meet on Tuesday, so, next Tuesday, yeah.
And this is not the only organization who's wanted to, to do this, so it's nice to be clear about...
But it's the only organization that actually kicks all their money back.
If everybody would, would promise to walk and...
Yeah, right.
Just have one drink and...
Yeah, they'll have to walk there.
We'd have to actually have everybody sign a contract.
We just sleep over.
All right. Is there any other old business?
No.
Is there any new business? There's no public comment, because there's no public. And so we need a resolution to go into executive session at 7:00 PM on May 21st at the middle school to discuss personnel, litigation, and negotiations.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
All opposed? And I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.